To you Greg, and maybe if you want to.
Want to what?
Go ahead and.
Whatever you're presenting.
Present your asking.
Thank you Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to come and visit with you this evening. I'm representing along with Darren Tanner. He's one of the members of the Foundation Board, and we're here to present the information that hopefully you've had in your pack and had time to review it. The main goal of the Carson District Health Foundation is to raise funds to provide machinery or equipment or items like that for the Cardston Health Center. And we've been in opera a long time. I've been with the Foundation since about 2008, and prior to that, I know Jeff was a member of that Foundation or president. And so that's our goal. We've come in here today to make a presentation. Annually, we've had a golf tournament, a golf scramble, since 2013. That's one of our main ways we raise money. We don't do much else besides the golf tournament, except we do have casino funds. Every three years, we have the opportunity to receive casino funds through our work there. We started with the golf scramble. We want to try something a little different this year. As mentioned in the brief that I gave you, we're trying to do an 18-hole par-three with hole-in-one on each hole, such that there's a prize will be given out. Our goal is to have a $10,000 prize on each hole. We're hoping this will generate more participation for us. In the past, we've raised approximately about $15,000 each scramble that we've had. It varies depending on the number of participants we have. But this year, we want to try to increase that, because our goal is to get two items that we want to get this year. One's an HD camera control unit, costs $50,000, and then a used mini-C arm at the cost of $10,000. A real mini-C arm will cost $80,000, so we're working to get one. That's $10,000 US, by the way, just for your information there.
Is that for the operating room?
Both these are for the operating room. Both of these items are that we're raising this year. If you want explanation of what they do, I can give a brief explanation, but I'm not a doctor. The HD camera will help the doctors, when they're doing surgeries, to see a lot better the picture of what's happening during the surgery, because it goes up on a screen, similar to other health equipment that they're using nowadays. And the mini-C arm, we're getting that because that's for the pitiatric people that come in and do the work on the feet for people. And what they've been doing is attaching screws to the feet, and they can't tell the distance the screws are going in. So sometimes, they say about twice a week, they're having people come in because they've set the screws too far, because they can't see exactly where the screws are, how far they're embedding into the bone and things. So this mini-C arm will help guide that, so they won't make that mistake when they're doing that operation. Yes?
Greg, I'm looking at the projects completed since 2012. $276,000. This equipment is earmarked for Cardston and it stays in Cardston.
Yes, uh-huh.
For its life.
Yeah, it's right. Yes, uh-huh. It's all for our hospital. So that's what we're here for. We're asking the town to help be a sponsor perhaps, a headline sponsor, if that's what you could do. We've got two headline sponsors right now. Simplot's been with us since 2013, and they have considerable contribution they give us. And this year, we've solicited Chapparrel Insurance and Registries to join with us for a comparable-sized donation to help provide for this hole-in-one golf scramble that we're having. And now, we're seeking help from the town to increase our revenue. We were asking the town if they would be willing to allow us to use the golf course at no cost. So hopefully, there's no out-of-pocket expense for the town. It is, will be a revenue deficit for you at the golf course, but it will be no out-of-pocket expense. In the past, we've had about 50 golfers. We hope to increase that this year, but we don't know how many we'll get. We never know that on any day. And so you can see in the presentation, it's been between $1,500 and $2,500. We usually give to the golf course for the use of the course. That's our request tonight, and we're really looking forward to the year. We've got lots of sponsors already, and we've increased our sponsorship for hole sponsorships by $150, and we've been very successful in people getting on board with us to help with this fundraising project.
Counselor Banger.
Now Greg, you're asking for a waiver on green fees and so forth?
Green fees and use of the carts, yes.
And use of the carts. That's my next question. How many carts do you think?
I don't know.
Depending on the golfers?
Well, yeah. In the past, members have given their carts and stuff. I know when they've had a big tournament there, they phone me up and say, Greg, can we use your golf cart for the thing? And other people have done that. If we get considerable people, we will have to perhaps rent some golf carts.
All right. Any other questions?
What if you get more than one hole-in-one?
Well, you buy insurance for hole-in-one, so every hole will have insurance, and so roughly a $300 tag for the insurance on each hole.
Okay.
Now, being a par-three, we will not be teeing off from the tee-off boxes on 14 of the holes, but we will tee off from the rough, such that we're not having everybody teeing off from the fairway and digging up the fairway with their irons, because that's what they'll be using for the hole-in-ones. And they can usually take out a big divot, so.
Okay.
So we're going to try to do that. That'll alleviate any damage to the fairways.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We will discuss that a little bit later on, and Jeff will give you the answer.
Okay.
Probably tomorrow morning.
Just one question, Mayor. Would the council be interested in being a headline sponsor? I need to know that, because then we can put that on the tournament brochures and our handouts we give to the businesses.
Yeah, we will let you know tomorrow morning, once we have all that discussed.
Okay.
You will have that knowledge. So sponsor or the waiver, or both? Is that what you're looking at?
The waiver's what we're asking for, but if you want to hand out some more cash, we're always willing.
What does the headline sponsorship cost?
We haven't set a fee on it, but it's over $1,500, what the other two have contributed, just so you know.
But by being, but by the town donating the golf course, donating, if in fact we choose to do that, the fees, the golf courts and everything, wouldn't that equal a sponsorship?
It would be. That's why I'm just letting you know that I would like to set where that parameter is.
So it's not an extra $1,500?
No.
If in fact we say yes to the golf course and all that goes with it, we are your head.
That's if you want that noted out in the public. It's however you want your sponsorship recognized, we will do what we need to do.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you. All right. We have the minutes of March 26 that were given to us. I reviewed them and found them to represent what we discussed. Questions regarding them? If not, we need to adopt them. Counselor Banger?
I move to adopt the minutes of March 26, 2019.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right. So the item number six, item A and B under that category, I will ask Jeff to present those two items, please. Thank you.
Well, you can grab those big spreadsheets I gave you here earlier.
So one has to do with a budget, the other one with a utility bylaw.
Yes, we'll do budget here for a few minutes.
Yes.
Okay, let me make sure I've got everything here. Yeah, we'll just start, so once you set your budget in December, and you may remember from last time, over the next couple of months before we set, right, we get actuals on requisitions, we get quotes on the stuff we budgeted for that are current, we get a few things. You also have some priority shifts sometimes, and in the meantime, we have things that come up, and so we make adjustments. So I want to go through, not every line, thankfully in this, but I want to go through about 10 or 12, maybe about 20 different lines in here, where there was changes that I want to get some context on, or there's some things we've put in the budget that I want some further discussion on from council. And so I don't intend to hit everything with an explanation by it, but anything with an explanation by it means we changed it since December. And this is all preliminary, and you can ask me a question on any of the lines, but I just wanted to hit on a few, so you're aware. So on page one, this is our revenue, operational revenue page. I just wanted to point out that the first line there, Step Grant 107841, we did not get Step Grant this year, and so we took that out of the revenue.
And you reason why?
What was interesting, we actually asked for a debrief from the grantor.
Yes.
And this year, they did it on a first-come, first-served basis.
Oh gee.
Not on a priority basis, which we'd never known before. So we had it in, you know, somewhere middle of the pack when it was due. And then they said, oh, well, we had so many applications that came in before you, you didn't get it. So now, apparently, Step is a scramble to see who can be the first one in.
I mean, is there something we could do politically regarding that type of model of funding? It's flawed.
Yeah, it's got some issues, because...
I would feel that one time is right. We really should, within the next year, write a letter to the minister's service that deals with services, because a model that is so flawed for a little town has a big impact.
I'm also very curious how Step makes it through the election.
Well, that's another point, right?
That'll be one that I think we'll be looked at quite closely.
Yeah. That is wrong, and I really think we should, we need to work towards a redress of that funding model.
Jeff, in regards to that Step program, wow, this is a, I don't know how to ask this. What are we going to do for manpower to help the museum and the Cardinal?
Right. So we've been, what happened when we got the notice? We informed Recreation Department, we informed the museum, and said, look, we didn't get Step, we're still committed to fund the staffing that's needed.
We will still fund it.
But can we look at ways to mitigate costs between all the students we have? So we're pushing the start dates of some. The museum is currently working with Jill to look at mitigating some costs there as well, using some volunteers on certain days and do some things. So I don't know the details of it yet, but Counselor Banger, those things are in motion to look at mitigating the cost.
Thank you.
Yeah. The $87,000 below is simply a carryforward. And then, just a small one underneath that Canada Day Party in the Park, the actual grant we got was a little less than what we budgeted, so not a big deal. If you go down to almost to the end of the page under ICE Center, this one's actually a good story, where we've had increased revenues last year. We have, our men's rec leagues ran four nights a week last season.
Really?
So we had a huge uptake on men's rec, and they were well-attended. So Randy and Jeff started a 40-and-over league on Monday nights, which I was, that was a fun league to play in, actually. It was just my speed. And then they had more competitive nights on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and younger crowd. And then Wednesdays was kind of a shiny night that was, I played that with my son on that night, too, and was well-attended. So the men's rec demand has gone up quite a bit.
That's great.
Yeah. Yeah, I was quite surprised by the amount of participants this year. So that's all I really had on page one to discuss. There was nothing, I mean, aside from Step, obviously, but we're dealing with that. I wanted to point out a couple of things on page two. The second line, sorry, first line, 172702, it's 483,000. Just keep that in mind when we get to later. We did not adjust golf course revenues. We're trying to be quite conservative on what they might be, but we did make adjustments to golf course expenses. And I simply could have increased revenues to make it wash, but I'm not confident in that, so we'll talk about that a little later. I just wanted to illustrate that, that we've held revenues but increased expenses. Ground four lines, 192402, we increased light custom work by 36,000. We got a contract from Alberta Transportation to change out all their streetlights along the highway to LEDs. So that's the revenue portion, and then later on, you'll see the expense portion, because we had to buy the materials as well. But it netted us about an $8,000 profit on the project. So that was a good thing.
That's good.
Yeah. Yeah, it was good. And then, there's a big chunk that all says carried forward from 2018. So this comes from the reserve listing that you guys approved after the audit last meeting. So we then take all of that and say, oh yeah, council agreed. And about a month ago, we had a meeting about what should we do with money in this category, this category, this category. And that's what that represents now. So it's a bunch of money coming into fund operations, is what that whole list of stuff is.
Jeff, you've got a pool rider, the balancing pool rider. Is that going to be carried on?
So that, yes.
And like the mayor said, that fluctuates quite a bit.
So we've been charging a pretty consistent amount every year.
Okay.
No, because that used to be a credit.
We're trying to not have it go up and down so bad.
Well, and balancing pool used to give us revenue, not from the rider. The balancing pool used to just get us revenue. Now we have to charge a rider, which we're listing as revenue here, which is 100% offset in the expense side.
That was the present government that decided that, if you remember.
That balancing pool was not expensive.
That's why I'm asking the question. We'll find out what's happening after the election.
Yeah, that might have some effect. So that's on the operational revenue side. On the expense side, starting in the two-dash accounts, if you go down to 212100, there's a bunch of pension, pension, unemployment insurance, health, dental, group insurance, workers' compensation. There's a couple of reasons why this has changed. Partly is because we get actual percentages that, you know, CPP is this, and EI will be this, and benefits are going up this amount. So we've added some, but there's a big chunk there on the admin that, and I want to talk to you a little bit about this, is I'm proposing that we fund an additional clerk position in the office. We're finding that by absorbing golf into the office and absorbing ECHDEV again back into the office and doing a few things, we're scrambling a bit. And actually, I'll tell you what I'm thinking of doing, and we'll talk about this more at another time, I think, as it solidifies, but I'm wondering about contracting out the ECHDEV piece to someone who actually works from home, but works on the ECHDEV portfolio for the town. Someone maybe semi-retired, somebody whose business, we got to talk about this a little bit, partly because there's a logistics issue in the office. I can't put someone else in the office, because we have bylaw in there now, we have golf in there now, we have all these people in there now. So we want to talk about, either we just bring in that other clerk position, and then that frees up Angel to do ECHDEV, which is certainly one of the things we can discuss, or we look at how we want to deal with that. But I actually don't want to have too many details on those specific people in the public session. So we can talk about that another time.
So are you looking for a half-time?
No, that would actually...
It's a full-time?
We think through some other transitions and some other things. That's all we're going to need to top up a full-time position in that category.
So it's a half-time, it's point?
No, it would be a full.
One point, yeah.
Yeah.
Jeff's going to work his magic to make up the other.
Yeah, we'll figure that out. But we think we're okay there. We're trying to minimize the impact, as always. 212207, it's a big number change, but it's simply we had the grant for the ICF and the, or the ACP grant for ICF in the revenue, this is the expense. So no impact on the bottom line.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, you may.
Insurance. Do we get our insurance through AUMA?
Yeah.
AMSC.
The business arm is AMSC.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what's listed there.
Yeah. And so, because Counselor Court's not here, and my wife mentioned to me that the museum insurance has gone up by 1,400 bucks.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's what she said. So I was wondering, where did that come from? That's like a 50% increase with a group like that that don't have very much money anyways.
Yeah.
And they're the ones that pay it. I was just wondering how that happened. So do you want to just kind of look into that?
I'm trying to remember if we had, what the overall increase in insurance was this year. It was fairly substantial overall, but...
I mean, I guess, where are they coming from? Like, have we had an inordinate amount of claims?
Well, remember, it's generalized risk.
No, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's all across.
Yeah. Yeah, they spread their risk out through countries, like over all kinds of countries and everything, but it's that general risk that the underwriter sees, right?
It really hurts when you get a small organization like that, that they're really hurting for dollars.
One other thing it could be, and I have no evidence on this, but it could be that sometimes the insurance companies will look at how they're valuing both the facility and its contents. And museums would be a very difficult one to value.
Yeah.
Very difficult. And so there could have been a change in methodology of how they valued the artifacts in the museum, but I got a note here, I'll check that out.
Yeah.
And see if we can understand.
Because I remember a couple of years ago, when Counselor Banger was on that board, they then got the insurance changed, because they hadn't had evaluation on the...
Collections.
Yeah, you didn't have an auditor. Now they've changed it, and they added a couple or $3 million to the value of all the stuff that was in the museum, and then it went up there. They took a big hit then. So, yeah, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Everything else on page two and three is really quite minor in nature, and a lot of this, I know you haven't seen it in this context, but it was carryforwards that we looked at a couple meetings.
Before we go forward, 212206.
Yep.
The vehicle expense.
Yep.
Is that with a new vehicle?
So that's just our operational fuel, getting it serviced, oil changes, stuff like that. You'll see the new vehicle and capital.
Okay.
Yeah. So I would like to go to page four, but by all means, again, if there's questions on page three, there wasn't much that changed there at all. Page four, just starting, 237200, this was, Brandon's been scratching his head on trying to fix that drainage issue by subway, between subway and where that comes out. We did, we got pretty lucky this year that the guys stayed on it with machinery, and we didn't ever have, we had one day where it hopped over the sidewalk and froze at night.
Yeah.
It melted during the day and then froze at night. We had a really bad one day there. But other than that, we were on top of it, not bad. And Brandon's trying to figure out how to slope that back into drainage and run those roofs off the right way, but he thinks he's got some things he wants to try. So that's some funding for that.
He thinks it's nasty there.
Is it going to be requiring a re-grading of the slope into the back alley?
What I, and I think I understand what he's saying, is that from where it is at the sidewalk.
Right.
They would move that manhole further south and then grade that thing down. So the lane would actually go down and then back up.
Because it's coming down the other way.
Yeah. Yeah.
Kind of like the Raymond streets.
So it would run, it would run south and not out into that sidewalk, as much as it can.
Did I say that out loud?
For the record, too.
Yeah. One thing of importance, this just came up since the budget, 242504, sewer plant maintenance. We had to have our facility re-inspected, because our license was expiring this year.
Okay.
And so they came and did the full inspections. They did everything. We were approved for another license for another 10 years, so that's all good.
It's a water plant.
This is a sewer plant.
Or sewer.
504.
But one of the requirements of our new approval is, over the next three years, we must conduct what's called a receiving water study. So where the water goes into the river, we must do a study on the impact of the effluent entering the river and going downstream.
Really?
Yes.
Gee.
And so what you're actually going to see is, it's going to be in a few phases. So the study we've put in here at $30,000, although we don't have quotes on that yet, we think that'll cover it. And then if there's any implementation, we can do it in successive years.
Go ahead, Counselor Selig.
Can we put those studies off until the outfall line quits breaking?
Well...
I think so.
I don't know if that's going to affect that. You know, it is just, they want to see what the impact of the effluent is on the water. But either way, it's getting there.
Okay.
Very, very interesting that in Alberta, we're so keen on water, pure water.
Management.
But yet, you go down to Quebec, and they dump numerous, I mean, they're just raw sewage going into the rivers.
Cities just dumping raw sewage.
All the time, and they allow it. And I mean, I'm glad to see we're doing this study.
Yeah.
But isn't it interesting, the difference?
Let's stay with all proper norms. That better.
It's also easy for us to say, because we're the first ones on the creek. We don't take anyone's effluent from upstream.
Yeah, thank goodness.
So we don't get too panicked about it.
Yeah.
But our intakes are all upstream of effluent. But that isn't the case for other cities and towns.
I couldn't resist that.
So that's what that's in there for. Then if you go down to, and I want to have a little discussion on this one, 243765, this says garbage transfer to reserves. But what this is, and for you previous councils, the three of you, you'll recall this discussion before, and it's a condition of our recycling building.
Mm-hmm.
It's not good.
No.
It's in really bad shape, and we've had a couple of issues up there recently, again, where we've put a lot of time and money to try and get it safe and passable. We're going to need to make a decision on what to do with that, because the current digs aren't going to work long-term. It's not a good building. I mean, it's in pretty bad shape. And so what we put in here was a reserve of $20,000 working towards a new building. Now, I don't think that we can have this discussion in 20 years, when there's $400,000 in there. By then, that building blew off the hill, and it's gone. But what it does is, we wanted to put it in there so that we were reminded that we can either reserve for a while, or we can borrow and pay, or we can put significant improvements, essentially build a new building inside or overtop that old building.
Counselor Selig.
Jeff, does TransAlta still use their building?
Fortis?
Fortis, rather, yeah.
No, they don't, and it would be available. That building in and of itself, I don't think does much for the space. I mean, it's pretty small.
No.
But it's a heck of a site, heck of a lot.
We discussed that years ago in the council, Gary.
Because I, I don't know, maybe I'm misimagining this, but it seems like the building is more structurally sound and bigger than what we're currently using.
Structurally sound, I think there's no debate.
Yes, that has that...
I don't know square footage, I just don't know.
Maybe not as big.
I know they would love to have Mr. Brent Kahoon's building on the bypass. Big overhead doors, wide open space, but that comes with a significant price tag, too, right?
Jeff, that could be an interesting conversation, considering the office area of that building could be utilized, too, to our advantage. Because there's, what, four or five offices in there? Large reception area, Gary. I think we went through that as a council. We were on that council, and we looked at that building.
I've never been in it, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It might be something we need to discuss.
So what's the timeframe, Jeff? Just because with this whole moving towards a commission...
Well, just for the wondering.
They would be looking at everything, including the recycling business.
So when I was, two weeks ago, Kim emailed me and said, hey, the door came off in the back, and we got a wreck, it's going to fall on somebody. And the guys went up, new hardware, new framing, you know, got it back. Bart tells me that he thinks it's better than it was, it's good and safe. But I agree with you, there's some really weird and interesting timing issues here.
Yeah.
I'll tell you another overarching one, and I've been keeping up on this over the last couple of weeks.
Lethbridge.
There's an amazing amount of municipalities abandoning recycling programs.
Yes.
Yes.
They're simply done with them.
Markets are not there.
There's no place to get rid of it. And it's all just, all we're doing is spending extra money and time and resources and manpower to take it to the landfill.
Yep.
I'm sorry for setting that program up.
No, I think, I think eventually they'll find a way to make this work, but right now, you look at major cities in the US, and I'm talking, not little towns, but million-plus people that are saying, everything goes to the landfill now. We're done.
But there is something else interesting in the region, is that Lethbridge is going to have a very significant recycling outlet. And I'm wondering if the idea is to become a regional collecting center.
Yeah, I would hope so.
And in that case, there again, is a story of timing. If that is the case, maybe for us... If that is the case, maybe for us, uh, it's maybe another possibility that we could entertain. Except, the difficulty is, is that up to now, we have kept that going to support the handicap society. But there, there is also a business case to be made on their part and on our part, and try to find some better solutions.
Yeah.
So.
Go ahead.
I guess, Jeff, can we, I recognize the need for safety in the building, but can we Band-Aid this for a little while?
Yeah, I think, I mean, if.
Too many things that are in the, twenty balls are in the air.
Totally agree. I think if, I mean, we could have put a two hundred thousand dollar reserve there if we needed it done in twenty twenty-one.
Right.
But I, I think it's not ideal, it's not a great building, but can it work for a while? I think so. We just have to be a little more vigilant on upkeep and repair.
Right.
Because we've kind of done it on an exception basis, frankly. Kim calls because there's a catastrophic failure, we go fix it.
So, question.
Councillor Brown?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Does it have to have those huge overhead doors there that cover the whole thing at nighttime when they close them? Or can you just do a partway, you know, a half door, just so that people aren't going in there? I, I don't know what.
I.
Yeah, but.
I mean, there's birds in there all the time regardless, and.
What are we talking, Dennis?
Just keeping the birds out or what?
Are you talking to these?
I'm talking to the recycling center, not the, are you talking to dump or the recycling center?
Wheels and tracks building.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, I apologize. I thought you were talking the.
Yeah, when you're talking about doors, they have to have a big door.
Yeah, they've got trucks backing up in there to load.
Yeah, I see, they gotta have that, yeah, I got you.
RC backs in there to unload cardboard and all that stuff, yeah.
Thank you, I apologize for.
If at one time there's a cement pad that's right to the, to the west of that building.
Yep.
What was that poured for?
It was, it was for the theater to put, to put the storage, yeah.
Still plan to, by the way, I talked to Sandy Kenley like two months ago and asked her that very thing.
Okay.
No, it's.
Seriously?
Yeah, well.
Either storing it in a trailer.
Because I know that there are people who are interested in cutting all the bolts off and making it into a pickleball court.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, as long as it's taken from the time they poured it to now, you may have a few years to enjoy that pickleball court.
So is this the first, uh, reserve that contribution, the first amount of money we're reserving? Or do we have some in reserves already?
We don't, no, this would be it, yeah. You, you have some interesting options when it comes to this utility too, because we didn't do it in this case, but to fund a reserve, you can adjust the recycling fee monthly.
Exactly.
Right.
You know, it's not a considerable increase on the monthly fee to cover a substantial reserve when every house is paying it every month.
Right.
So we have some options to fund something more robust, and we've had discussion in the past about, that's one where you could actually borrow, build, and then have your whole financing costs come out of the recycling fee, if it's not too onerous, I mean, to a point.
Right.
You can't charge eighty dollars a month for recycling, right? But could you get away with two fifty more a month per household?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably, because you're paying this financing. So we can look at that a little further, but I agree with you, councillor Silk, there's too many political implications right now out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Okay, any more on recycling? I just wanted to put it there so it was on our minds when we looked at our reserves listings and everything. Um, nothing much on page five, they're all really minor.
Oh, sorry, councillor Brown.
This isn't on, um, garbage or anything like that, but it's in the same area.
Yeah.
Um, so the thawing machines, five thousand dollars.
What, what item number is that?
Sorry?
Go back to.
Two, four, two, five, oh, one.
Councillor.
Two, four, two, five, oh, one, okay. So thawing machines, five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So my question is, so the town bought them for five thousand dollars. So are, is it the town's idea that when my lines freeze up, I'm going to call the town, I will pay you X amount of dollars to come and unthaw them?
That's the discussion we're having on the next item.
Yeah.
I know.
It's the next bill.
So I don't have an intention with it yet.
Can you leave it for that time?
Okay.
Honestly, I don't.
It water lines or sewer lines?
No.
Says water lines.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we need to discuss because.
Just because it's flagged here, so I just thought.
Yeah, we, Bart found some equipment, and so we have it now, but we need to discuss what our role is there. Absolutely, good question. Uh, like I said, page five, I really don't have anything of any substance.
Can we, can we stay on page five for a minute?
Yeah.
Campground contract? The two, seven, two, oh, one, three.
Yep.
Uh, that's our cost, the town cost for the campground, like the Direct Energy N-Max reunion center?
That's what.
Cable net and internet?
Correct, thirty-two, four, yeah.
So what does our contractor provide?
They staff it.
That's all they do is staff it?
Twenty-four, seven.
They do ma, some maintenance, and they staff it, and they provide some of those things, but yes.
So they don't, they don't provide the cable, internet hosting?
No, they pay us a thousand dollars a year back for some of that.
Okay.
Um, but that's their portion, correct.
And tables at the reunion center, we, looks like we're going to invest six hundred dollars?
That's probably some repairs, new, new planks and things like that. Oh, no, the tables, sorry, those were internal ones. Yeah, they are buying a few every year.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is our reunion center in pretty decent shape?
You know, I, I haven't personally gone and done a thorough inspection. I think it's okay. Yeah, I think it's okay.
Be sure being used a lot.
Yeah, our contractor's not telling us otherwise.
Okay.
That's where I go with that.
It's very functional.
Whoa.
Yeah. So page six, um, if we can go down to two, seven, two, seven, oh, two, there's about six accounts in there, all the golf ones. I just want to talk about those for a minute. Um, Alex has been working with Miles, they're getting the hiring done. We're actually opening this weekend, so we're probably five weeks earlier than last year.
Yeah.
Maybe even more, five or six weeks earlier than last year.
That's pretty good.
It, it's good, except it costs you a little extra in labor, is what it does. Because you have to get everybody started and going earlier. So you'll see from the budget we had in December, there is some additional there in, um, labor. There's another forty-two thousand dollars there. Now, I mentioned earlier, we didn't increase, we could have simply said, hey, council, don't worry, there's no impact on the budget because we increased revenue by forty-two thousand dollars, but I'm not confident in that. So we left revenue where it is, hoping. Um, you will also be getting a letter in your package next council meeting from the Gulf Advisory Board requesting even more labor and some extra things. And we've accounted for some of it in this budget, but not all of it, and I wanted to have a bit of discussion. I kind of want to get a feel for your tolerance for loss on this facility, frankly.
That's.
And I know everyone's got a different answer for that, and, and it's probably a little over the map, but we are budgeting a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar loss in this budget right now. Now, sixty-five thousand of that is a capital payment, so it's not an operational loss. But total, including that payment, it's a hundred and forty-four thousand, with sixty-five of it being the line of credit payment. And I just, I know that that's going to be a bit of a capital-intensive facility over the next few years. It, it is, we're, we're trying to get it up to a level and back to a level that it should probably have been, but it's not. And I've got a new superintendent, and I've got a new manager on the other side who are all trying to figure out what this is going to look like, and we don't have a lot of history to, to, to guide us along the way as far as financially. We have very little data from that point of view. So everyone's trying to get a bit of a feel for how this is going to play out. I, I mean, we have a May like last year, we're not even going to be open for the whole month of May. And there's your thirty-two thousand in labor. So I just wanted a bit of a discussion as to, are we comfortable with this for this year? And recognizing that for the next few years, we need to probably sock a little into it before we level out. That, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, councillor Bangery, councillor Silk, and myself.
Is this a conversation that we need to seriously look at after IMDP or, yeah?
I don't anticipate you're going to get a huge fiscal share of the golf course out of the ICF discussion.
No, zero.
That's my feeling.
Let me help you with that.
Councillor Silk?
Okay. In answer to your question, Jeff, my simple answer would be yes, and I'll explain a little bit. You're right, we're kind of digging ourselves out of a hole with this. But we have to recognize that this facility is one of the facilities we have in town that will draw people from a significant distance. People aren't going to come from Lethbridge to swim in our pool.
Yeah.
And they're not going to come from Lethbridge to plan our playgrounds, but they will come here to golf. So I think that the payback will be, when we finally get the golf course up to shape, we'll find an increased number of golfers, too. We have a golf committee that's pretty motivated right now, and I would hate to discourage them. They're feeling the positive vibe from this council. And, uh, there was a volunteer day at the golf course on Saturday, and we got quite a bit done in a couple hours' time. And they want to continue to do that every month.
There's another one tomorrow night, I think.
Really?
Yeah, I think that's what Alex said, I was coming in.
Do another one tomorrow night.
Yeah, do another one.
Yeah, they've got some youth groups coming out, apparently, is what he told me today.
Yeah.
So, and I, I don't want to put words in councillor Brown's mouth, but I think we're pretty on board with what the golf committee is recommending, because we sit on that committee.
All right. I'm going to, can I?
Wait, that one, I have a kit for you, I'm ready for you.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
I just looked at that hundred forty-four thousand, definitely, it's a, it's a large amount of money. We cannot ignore it, because it has an impact, no matter which way you look at it, at the end of the day, in a budget. But there is that sixty-five thousand dollar that is still a capital expense that is a necessary expense. We really don't have the liberty not to do something to fix that course. It's our asset needs to be fixed, so I understand that. But having said that, I also think that in days to come and years to come, we need to have a plan long-term to make sure that the deficit is not at the point that it was eight years ago when I came on council, where people on, uh, when I was on the trail, talking about that very issue, wanted that golf course out of the town's hand, because I felt hundred thousand dollar loss was too much. So we need to keep that in mind, those people are the same voters. So we need to remember that we need to consider also what the voice of the people in this community is. You can't ignore it. Councillor Brown?
I understand what you're saying. Um, like councillor Silk said, we've been at all the meetings, we've been out there with our rakes, and one of the beautiful things that I'm seeing is that the, that the town of Curstun is supporting this, that, that Alex and his crew are doing a great job of drumming up business, are drumming up tournaments. Their goal is to bring this golf course back up to par like it was in its glory days and maybe even better. And sometimes it takes money in order to bring things up to where they should be, so that we can make money on it. Because like councillor Silk said, we're not going to be making extra huge money on our ice rink or our swimming pools. But this is, goes in hand in hand with our act of, right? Our active is all about bringing money back into this community, and by us putting money into the golf course, essentially, we're helping to put money into the businesses in town, and they see that. And I have been asking questions, and I am getting positive reinforcement. And I think, like councillor Silk again said, when we are sitting on these boards and we're talking to this ad hoc committee, they are super inspired, and they did show up with kids and rakes, and we spent two hours and got a pile of work done, and they're excited, and we'd hate to squash that excitement.
You know, what is needed then is to make sure that there is a little bit of communication
Yes.
to the, uh, community regarding that involvement, pictures, video, something like that. We need to have that to show that it is a community, uh, facility that is supported by the community and its people as volunteers. I think that will go a long way for people to appreciate what we're trying to do here at this table.
Thank you, I absolutely agree with that, which is why, when we were down there working, I said to Alex, I said, we need to get a picture, let's get a picture. So we got all twenty-plus people to come over, and we got a picture, and it's up on the, it's up on the website already.
And we should really, uh, can I suggest something? The group that you have that is looking after the golf course, could someone there put a little write-up in a paper?
Absolutely.
Or have it on channel thirty-two?
Absolutely.
Also?
Yeah, absolutely.
Could that be done?
Absolutely.
Because I think the more you do that, while you're trying to improve
Agreed.
things and try to, to present the benefit for our town, the better it will be. Councillor Silk?
Okay. I'll just say that in my previous experience with council, the golf course was always one of those who aren't sure about things. But I've always been passionate about the golf course and its potential. What's happened though is, we've always come up short of what we really needed to do in order to make this course make money. We always.
Yeah.
Forget the terminal, I apologize, we always half-ass it.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And it's one of the facilities we have in town that can make money and draw people to town.
Okay, councillor Brown, councillor Bangery.
Okay, um, what's going on, what's happening with the idea of the golf vacation with the trailers, you know?
All the package deals.
The package deal, are they still talking about that? You brought it up, councillor Silk, that maybe we could have some RV spots.
Destination.
For that, so is there communication going on there, planning?
That, that's the expansion to the campground.
We'll actually talk about that just later in the capital piece here.
Okay.
Okay.
So councillor Bangery?
Mayor, I, I agree with you, but we've got to consider this. We're dealing with a whole different mindset of golfers, you know, and what they're willing to do. And our community is evolving rapidly into the millennials and the, whatever they call it, the next generation. And they're looking at positive golf course, you know? And before, we had the, how should I say it, very nice old boys' club. And they, you know, they set a standard, and they didn't want to improve it or, or whatever, and so.
I don't think that they didn't want to improve it, I think we never had
Well.
the, uh, the desire to really put too much in there for, for whatever reason that was.
We, we never, because we, we really couldn't see our way out of it.
But last year, we saw it could make money. Except this year, we're taking it over, it's a brand-new story, and we need to try to understand how we can manage it as a town and, uh, deal with the important capital repairs that need to be done to that course.
One of the things, as I was walking in, I just happened to say hello to Alex and ask him how things are going with the golf course, and he said he just got finished sending out an email out to all the membership, which probably has never been done before.
Yep.
And, you know, encouraging people to come, and they're going to have some, they're going to open up on Saturday, and I'm thinking, this is really positive, what's going on.
There's good vibes.
I feel really good, I really feel good about what's going on with this situation, so kudos to all you guys.
Okay. Any more questions or comments?
Just, oh, I guess my final comment is, like I said, this committee is very motivated. In fact, without reading too much or jumping the gun from our next council meeting, they want to be involved in raising funds to create a new clubhouse, so they want to create a committee. They want to be involved in helping to fundraise for it, so I think we should give them some credit.
Well, if, if, if they're that motivated, that is something that we should look at.
So I'll mention some of those requests from the committee, we actually put them in this budget, and we'll get to that in the capital, even though it was a little, I don't have the letter to you yet. So I just want to be clear, I don't necessarily have a position on this, of course, I'm always cautious about the optics of the loss of the golf course, but where there's political will, then that's what, we'll move it forward, right? That's why I wanted to ask, I wanted to get a feel for the political will around the table. This, this amount of money in this operating piece is funded. I'm bringing you another draft balanced budget.
We know that.
So this, I'm not asking you where to cut here.
No.
Um, this is funded if we go ahead with this as, as proposed. So we're okay there. We're fortunate right now that we're not having to scrutinize the budget as heavily as we have in the past. And there's a few reasons for that, but we have a little bit of, we have the ability to fund another forty thousand dollars at the golf course, frankly, is, is the moral of that story, where it hasn't always been the case. So I'm not offended by that at all if there's political will. And then I want to talk about the capital here in just a minute too. So I'll take that feedback on the golf course. I think where my mind goes to the golf course is what we need there, and, and it's probably something we can do by the fall, is just like we did the REC master plan with long-term spending and what do we need a year to put into capital so that we can achieve those goals? We need a dendamay to the REC master plan, which is golf course with the exact same. If we want to spend this in capital over the next twenty years and replace this over the next twenty years, we need to put this much a year into it.
Yeah.
So that we know that going in.
Counselor Brown?
But I think the key is for the first time, we're back in the game and Alex and everyone who works out there is going to have an idea of where we're at going into this because we haven't been running it for I don't know how many years. We, we haven't known what
Oh, yeah.
what it entails. But now, just within a year, I think that will give us a better outcome and understanding for what is, you know, our five-year plan or three-year or two-year.
And remember, Miles is coming in with fresh eyes too, right? So he's just coming in saying, you know, we actually need this and why don't you have that?
Yeah.
Like this is a, this is a standard piece. You don't have this. We should get that. So he's coming in with, with a fresh set of eyes on it too.
Who's this? I don't know.
Miles, our superintendent up there, grounds guy.
Oh, okay. He took over from Greg.
Counselor Bangry?
Yeah.
Greg Adams?
Yeah.
Mayor, can we move forward? Uh, two seven two eight hundred, town beautification. Okay, just underneath the golf course stuff. Main street trees, are we gonna start experiencing some problems, root problems with those main street trees?
Uh, potentially. It's one of the reasons they got rid of the red bricks and went to exposed aggregate.
Okay.
So that money's there when we need to hydrovac one out and replace it or one gets hit and dies or, you know, pruning. The, those are, those have a, merchants have a love-hate relationship with those trees.
Yeah.
Yes, they do.
They look good, but they block half their building. You know, those kinds of things. You spend thirty thousand on a sign and then the tree covers it.
Right.
Counselor Salk?
It was my understanding that with all of these trees that were replaced, they were all put in root baskets so the roots don't go crazy.
I actually think there's like a culvert that shoots the roots down before they go out, if I understand correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so one of the pages.
Main street trees, I would love to see them lit with many lights down the, down the street at nighttime. That'd be wonderful.
Really would. And I, can I comment on that too? I mean, you go to all kinds of tourist towns and that's what they do. They light up their main street, not just Christmas time. They have white lights on their trees. I mean, you go to Jasper, you go to Banff, you go to Medicine Hat and they go to to Red Deer and all over they've got them. And that would cheer people up, get people out in the streets. They want to walk up and down the streets at nighttime and shop here. I think we need to look into that. Just means we're gonna have to get some, some plug-ins, some receptacles close by there. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, that's an idea to be kept somewhere.
Fifty minutes on this, so let me
It's no problem.
I didn't bring you food tonight either. There's a little, two more items after this. Uh, page seven, pretty minor, um, in two nine two five hundred, there's twenty-eight thousand five hundred there. That's the expense part of the revenue we generated from the Alberta transportation project. So it looks like a big number, but it actually had no ill effect on the budget at all. And then we get into capital funding. Um, there's not much here. Most of it is just those reserves that we've already gone over and approved the reserve listing. Uh, there's a big number on one nine five five nine oh. It looks like a big number, but it has no effect on the budget. So in the two, twenty eighteen, sorry, in the December budget, we had six grand, because we're doing this skid steer replacement program through Case where you pay so much a year and then they get you a new machine. Hockin wanted to recognize it differently where we, where we, we booked the disposal of the whole asset and then booked the purchase price of the new one and not just budget the difference. Because we actually are disposing of an old skid steer, taking in a new one, but the difference is still only six thousand dollars.
It's five thousand.
It didn't affect the budget at all. It's just recognizing it differently. And then there's a number of reserves, as you've seen, uh, down there at the bottom, which we've, I think we've talked about all those in the recent past. And then to the last page, there's just a couple of things in capital that I want to discuss with you. A lot of things are just reflecting actual quotes or purchase prices to this point. So if you go down to two seven two zero two seven, and it's probably the biggest number in the whole thing for these changes, it's the campground expansion phase one. So we have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Brandon went back and really got down to the details on all the utility lengths, all the costs. He gave us kind of a ballpark to start with, but he's, he's gone down, drilled down on it. So he's got a hundred and seventy thousand for phase one, which will put all the utility underground, water, sewer, electrical, everything will be there. We funded that, which is what I wanted you to be aware of, is we had some carryover MSI and we've essentially funded it almost totally with MSI. So it did, it did reduce what we, we had about four hundred thousand dollars in carryover MSI, so well, about three hundred and some. So that's come down, obviously, but we, we could use it without taxing for it. So that's what we've chosen at this point in time. That's our recommendation, but certainly if council feels otherwise, we still have our full allocation for twenty nineteen, eight hundred and five thousand, no problem. This was unused from previous years.
Fantastic.
So that's how we funded the hundred and seventy grand.
And when, when, when would this take place?
Well, we're hoping to do it in October when the campground is closed, but we have enough open weather to, to get it all done.
We said we didn't want it done during the season.
And, and they've got a full slate for the summer anyway.
Yeah.
You're doing seven thou when you're in Joe.
Correct.
So, yeah. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Jeff, I'm gonna throw a curve at you, okay?
Sure.
Uh, Civic Center Capital?
Yep.
Yeah, two seven two four one seven.
Yep.
Um, I'd like to suggest maybe, uh, sharpening your pencil somehow and look at money setting, being set aside for our website and possibly redoing the whole thing.
Yeah, the website needs to be fixed.
I agree.
We had this conversation in our ECDev meeting last night and to Shem's credit, of course, Shem and Terrence get into their computer cowboy talk that goes over the rest
None of us know what they're talking about. We've had that discussion, but.
It's spicy to say. Shem has convinced me that the, what we're using, the product that we're using for our website is antiquated and it's not really user-friendly and it's not something that is, it doesn't present the town in a, in a good way. And so I would like us to see, to recommend, to look at getting money to create a whole new website that's much more user-friendly.
But that's a lot of money. We could find out how much it costs. Four thousand dollars?
Forty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I, I, I agree with where you ended there, but I'm gonna say I disagree with a couple of things and no, no malice intended. The site is actually set up to be super user-friendly, which gets rid of a bunch of functionality. So we don't have the functionality we could have on a more robust platform. Because it was meant to be drag and drop.
Right.
Right?
But, okay, but.
We get to the same end.
Do you want to listen to the conversation between
Oh, yeah, no.
Shem and Terrence and what, what's it called, Shem? The, what we're currently using?
Squarespace, yeah.
Squarespace.
Yeah.
They'll tell you that it, it's, you can drag and drop. However, it has its limitations because it's meant to be for, hey, I've got a flower shop. I'm an artist and I
You're doing a blog.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, Shem's tried to explain what would be ideal. I didn't understand any of it.
Hey, good. So you didn't understand it either?
No.
All I understood is that the website
Yeah, okay.
platform is terrible.
Uh, we can look at that between, we actually have, interestingly enough, I know we've got thirty, we've got thirty-one thousand dollars in an ECDev reserve, which was put in there years ago, even before my time, for the intent to replace the directional signage that's downtown.
Oh, forget it.
There you go.
And so there may be a good chunk of funding if council chooses to use it for a different purpose. I actually looked at it this morning because I thought, what do we have in ECDev? Because I was thinking about one thing that isn't in this budget, by the way, because we don't know the answer and we'll deal with it when we get to that, is what our portion of the cares grant will be for the corridor? Because we don't know what half of the total is yet.
Right.
So I thought, well, we could use that, that ECDev reserve for that potentially.
Right.
So we'll look at that as we go forward and how we could fund that. Okay?
Could we find out from South Grove? South Grove has redone their whole website two years ago, two summers ago. And it's quite a good site. So I'm wondering if somebody of that caliber could maybe work on it?
I can talk to Peter.
Or help us at least.
I mean, Shem has some ideas on what of a, you know, a developer that has done work for a number of municipalities, the Crowns Pass and whatnot. And they do have some very attractive websites that are really
When, I, I totally agree with you. I don't care for a website. Counselor Bangry?
Jeff, two seven two four one seven, Civic Center Capital?
Yes, that's what we just talked about.
It's a story on the council chamber upgrades.
So those are pretty much done. We had like the microphones, the speakers, uh, the new projector just came in today.
Okay.
Um, so just pieces like that.
All right.
Um, that bill's pretty much been paid now.
Thank you.
Yeah, we had to replace a bunch of things in the, in the server area and all that stuff. So, um, so then I just wanted, we were just at campground.
Can you give us a second?
Yeah, sorry, Counselor.
I just wanted to, um, talk, uh, a little bit about sidewalk repairs, curb repairs on the budget.
Sidewalk repair.
Yeah. We had our library meeting and there were, there was concerns about the disintegration of that whole curb all the way up the laneway here between the civic center and, and the library. Lots of people have been, you know, they do U-turns there and they hit the curb and it's really breaking down. So they asked me just to bring, bring that up. So I thought, well, you can chat with Donna, maybe take a look at that and then go from there. Just brought that, throw that out there.
Okay. Uh, just underneath the, oh, sorry, was there anything more on campground? Okay, just underneath on the pool capital, I just wanted to mention, um, we have, we put some money in there for what's called, we're calling HVAC upgrades. We had a couple of small things that didn't get, they didn't, I want to word this very carefully. We have a bit of a mix of deficiencies in the construction and some things we want to enhance that we didn't do as well as we'd hoped to when we built the pool. So for example, what I'm getting at is heat recovery and ventilation in the basement particularly and in the back of the building, uh, in the change room areas. We're not getting enough CFM exchange in the back. And so, um, we're working with Mike, who was the general on that project, and we're working with Schaefer Plumbing, Ryland and Brandon to look at what our best options are to get all the heat and air recovery requirements in the building. Um, that's one of the risks you run when you do a design build like we did. So, uh, I'll give you a good example. When the architect drew the building, he had large air handling units on the roof of the building. And Schaefer Plumbing came and said, you know, we could zone this with furnaces and put them inside the building and it'll save twenty thousand dollars. And so we did that, but we came up a little short on the air recovery that was required into the back of the building. Now, from a practical point of view, I think it's a moot point because we have six doors open there every day it's open in the summer, plenty of air exchanging in the building. But there is a code. And the code says you need this many CFM per square foot, all that stuff. So we're looking, uh, we're all meeting next week, Brandon, Jensen, Schaefer Plumbing, Schaefer Construction, myself. We're meeting next week to come up with, what are we doing downstairs, back of the building, front of the building? Make sure everything's good to go. And so we, we anticipate it's going to cost us some dollars to get that fixed. And so there was initial savings that's, we're gonna have to just put a little back into that now.
In the basement there before they did their reconstruction, I, I used to go down there and exercise and it was always really kind of the stale air.
Misty.
Is that gone now?
Well, no, that's why we need a little, we need to enhance the, it's better because they have their own furnace in there now.
Yeah.
But remember, the room right next to it is running through thousands of gallons an hour of water and it's dang humid.
Yeah.
So we're looking at, can we put some heat where we can exchange the air? Pull that air out of there and bring in fresh air?
Get some pressure.
So that's part of it.
All right.
Yeah. Not to mention the activity in the basement leads to needing to exchange air.
Are we okay with this?
Just one other thing real quick, uh, two seven two seven two seven, it's golf course capital. These are some things that the golf advisory committee is in their letter to provide. Uh, they include a roller, which is to help the greens, um, a beverage cart to use in tournaments and a chemical sprayer. Uh, Miles would prefer, actually, what we've been doing is we were, we were doing a herbicide application for the black sands like twice a year for them. And Miles is suggesting that if you can do it more often with a lighter dose, your turf will have better health. And if they had that equipment there, they could do it quite readily. He's a certified applicator. And so they're looking for some equipment. Now, what we did to fund that is we had, we had done a borrowing for three hundred thousand dollars, but we came in well under that with, when we put the mowers and the golf carts out to tender. So we put that much in the capital to be funded by the borrowing and covered by the sixty-five thousand dollar operational payment, if you followed that whole thing.
Yeah.
The point is it's funded through the borrowing.
Okay.
And so it didn't, it, it, if we keep it that way, it doesn't impact the budget. And that's everything.
Counselor Brown?
Twelve thousand dollars for a used beverage cart? What's, what is this?
It's twenty-four thousand new, twenty-five thousand?
What does it look like?
Refrigerated.
Is the refrigerator on wheels? Is it portable or?
For one second, Counselor Brown, Counselor Brown is going to inform us.
I asked that very question and, uh, essentially they drive it around from hole to hole so that they're able to sell and they figure that they should pretty much make their money back at the end of the season because they're selling things to the golfers. So the golfers don't have to drive up to the awesome clubhouse and buy things. Sorry on that. So it just, it just, yeah, it just stops them from going up there, that it's right on the site and, you know, it's a great service that we're giving the golfers.
Thanks for the enlightenment. That sounds awesome.
The kicker with those councils, they have to do, it's, it's not just a retrofitted golf cart because your whole suspension and the whole, all the weight it has to hold on that thing is, it's all upgraded. And so, yeah, they're crazy expensive. We don't have a quote on one of these yet. Alex is just hoping he can find a used one in that ballpark over the season.
All right. So are we fine with that? Thank you, Jeff, and I appreciate you not asking for more money.
I sort of am, I'm just, I found a way.
Yeah, but you found a way to, to fund all that, so.
I am technically asking you for a couple hundred thousand more.
I, I know, but you have means to get it without having to tax more and that's already a good point.
There. Uh, we, the tenders have closed on the solar project. We're getting costs on extension of the road and extension of the electrical distribution infrastructure, which we'll include in the whole project. We didn't put it in the budget because it's neutral on the budget.
That's right.
Because the borrowing and the grant will totally offset the cost.
That's right. That's what we wanted.
And so if council chooses to go ahead of it, we can put it in at that time by a motion of council. So I just wanted to mention that because it's a hu, it'd be the biggest ticket in the budget and you would notice it's not in there right now.
It'll be an in and out, so it's not going to hurt.
One other thing we did, and it doesn't show in this budget, is you had 90,000 for the spray park budgeted in 2021. We moved it to 2020 in the three-year budget. We weren't looking at that today just because if they can come up, if the Rotary comes up with that additional, we could potentially do that project in the spring, depending on how that all goes.
Right.
The other big project, and I'll talk to you more about this at our planning session, is I've always wanted to be able to bring in raw water irrigation from the cemetery where it is now into the whole west area that's developing. And so Brandon, over the last week or so, has got me cost and they shocked me, by the way. But it's about 480 grand to bring that in. But that would bring it all the way to the elementary school and all the way over to Second Avenue.
That's not bad.
And then start branching from there. But we'll talk about that a little more later because we think we can find considerable funding for a project like that. And so I wasn't prepared to put it in the budget when it would be largely unfunded.
Counselor Zink?
I think, uh, previous councils had looked at also running from the Etna Levitt irrigation system by the elementary school to the east side.
Yep.
Doing the same thing.
Yep. Now, we are pulling the soccer park, for example, in the junior higher on raw water.
Right.
So we are pulling, we did that window in the soccer park happened, we pulled raw water over there. What my, the thing with the west side is as it continues to develop, getting that in becomes harder and harder. There's no pavement curbs or gutter between irrigation and the elementary school right now. So it can't, but it's a long way. I thought the line was actually closer into town, but it's sitting at the corner of the cemetery. And so we'd have to dig in a 10-inch line all the way from the cemetery. And when your pipe's 90 bucks a meter, it starts to add up really quickly.
Mm-hmm. Also, Jeff, it, I think we had a previous conversation about actually using water from lateral cave for the water treatment plant, but we've never done it because of the rapidity.
Yep.
That is not the best way.
Is there some, and I think we, we had talked about working with the Etna Levitt irrigation to actually pipe some of that so it helps us?
Correct.
So we can actually use that water and we'd save on pumping costs?
Correct.
Is that correct?
So the new amalgamated irrigation district, my understanding, Counselor Banger, you might be able to correct this, but one of the top priorities is piping the rest of that so that the water clarity is much better at our plant.
Right.
Perfect.
Yeah. And I've spoken with Mr. Levitt and Mr. Vadney from the irrigation district that if, and because the town did this once before and it was before my time, but the town fronted some capital and then they paid the loan.
Right.
Because they couldn't borrow.
Right.
I think they can now, actually. I think the province allows irrigation districts to borrow now, but at the time they couldn't. So I said, look, if we were to, if we were to pay the interest, what I was talking to them about is if we paid the interest on your loan, could they then get it so that the savings we might incur from that happening might outweigh the interest on the loan?
Right.
So we were looking at a few things like that as well, but now they've amalgamated. I understand they potentially have the capital to start.
Awesome.
Yeah. Okay. That's my last thing on budget.
In, in summary, Jeff, this is a great exercise. When are we going to do it again because of our deliberations with the county?
Well, frankly, I don't think it'll affect us this time around.
Certainly not this year.
Yeah.
So how does next year sound, Counselor?
You will do this all again in two weeks from today.
Okay.
When we bring you a mill rate bylaw.
Okay.
Regarding what you're talking about, we will not have a sense of anything regarding ICF until next April. So don't hope for anything so much before that would surprise me if we had it before then.
Do you need a motion for this?
No.
No, nothing right now, Counselor. We'll, like I said, we'll formalize the mill rate bylaw for next meeting.
Okay.
We're well ahead of the game on that too, from a timing point of view.
All right. So the next item is bylaw 1582. I have asked Jeff to carry on with, uh, that item. It's a utility bylaw because it, it has to do with the recent, uh, issue that we had in town of frozen lines. It needs to, to be reviewed to try to make sure that we all understand what it really covers and doesn't cover regarding costs incurred by the landowner, the taxpayer. Because, uh, for most people it has been fine, but some people have incurred definite expenses and serious expenses, actually. And so we, we need to kind of look at that and try to understand that bylaw properly. And if it need changing, well, we will need to give direction to administration.
So I didn't draft any new clauses for the bylaw tonight. I just wanted to have some initial discussion about where our thoughts are in light of this new issue that doesn't happen to us often, if at all. On a couple of items, and then we can start down this process of maybe some amendments and how we want to look at it. But what I put in your background was, there's three clauses that kind of set the context for this event. One is the bylaw indemnifies the town for interruption of service. So if we have to shut down water to fix something, or if there's an act of God that shuts down water, we're not liable to any individual for that interruption of service. The bylaw also says that we don't credit utility bills for interruption. So it's very explicit about that. And I can kind of understand that we go shut off a section of town for six hours in a day, rest assured, somebody's going to want their six hours where the water access credited back. It, it, so I get why that was put in there. It makes sense to me. And then the last one is that the bylaw outlines responsibility for service lines. And the water, it's from the, um, shut off or the curb stop or the key or whatever you want to call it to the home. And for the sewer, it's from the home to the main. And there's a couple of reasons for particularly the sewer, because we get this question a lot. Why do I have to be responsible for my service line to the main? One of the large issues is that we can't control what you put down it. We have absolutely no control as to how you treat and what you do in that main. So if you decide you want to flush diapers down it all the time, the town really doesn't want to go and bear all the costs of digging that up and fixing it constantly. That's a problem for us. Uh, water lines are a bit of an interesting discussion because you, you can't really manipulate them very well. You know, you can't flush anything down them. Uh, they flow one way only, but that's what the bylaw says. And that's relatively common around Alberta. That's, that's a fairly common, but not identical refrain in bylaws. So we had this water freezing issue and we saw a number of different responses to the issue by residents. And of course, no bylaw is usually going to capture every response. So let me outline a couple of responses we saw. Resident had frozen lines. They called us. We went and investigated. Sure enough, it's what it was. We told them they had the option to call plumber because at the time this happened, we had no way to help them. We didn't own any equipment that could help. It's frozen. What can you do? And it was too cold to hook them up overland. The, it was still getting, if I recall, it was 15, 16 below at night that first week. So it simply wasn't an option to go overland. So what happened is residents found they really couldn't find a plumber and they're, because this was happening in Calgary, Lethbridge, it was happening everywhere. And so plumbers were just busy that could even do anything at all. We didn't have any local plumbers with equipment to deal with frozen water lines at the beginning of this. So when this started, there wasn't a local response at all. So Bart went and said, well, let's fi, see if we can find equipment. Well, you can imagine, equipment suppliers are now backordered. So you don't get it tomorrow anymore. You're a month out, you're three weeks out, which is what we were. We have it now, but we have it now. Frost is out of the ground. So some chose to call plumber. I, I don't think there was at that, again, that, that week one, I'm not aware of any success there, that anyone was able to find success in that. And then week two came and it got warm enough that we, we as the town sent our guys out to all the properties we knew and they hooked them up overland to the neighbor. So then by week two, everybody we were aware of had water.
With the caveat, leave the water.
Yeah, and we told them at night, it's still getting three, four, five below. You gotta leave this run. You know, your neighbor doesn't need to anymore, but you do because it's flowing through their house and then coming to your house and your line will freeze if you don't let it run. And that worked for everybody but one that we're aware of, who didn't leave it to run. So what we saw is some residents still chose after we hooked them to overland, by this point in time, uh, there were some plumbers that could respond. And so they called a plumber and the plumber worked on them, some successfully, some unsuccessfully, but some people incurred considerable cost because they chose to bring in a plumber. And so it begs the question, I've met with, with some of these people and said, we had you hooked overland and you chose to still incur the cost. So what do you see as our responsibility there? Because you didn't have to. You were functioning pretty normally after that point. Once you have overland, it kind of acts and feels the same as your regular service line. Probably not the same pressure exactly, but you can have a shower, flush the toilet, run the dishwasher, do laundry, those kinds of things. So that's where it starts to get a little more complicated because our response out of the office was call a plumber. We're, we can't help you. And the other complication here is when you think about a water service line and you think about how cold and how much frost there was, if that line froze one inch outside of that house or one inch inside the main, it only going to take an hour now that the water's not flowing for the whole thing to be frozen. So for us to accurately pinpoint where it froze, frankly, is impossible. I can't with any surety tell you where anyone's line froze. There's just no way. The whole line's frozen in minutes because you have that conductive cold and the frost that's now on that whole line and, and it is what it is. So we had that difficulty too. So when we looked around the region, we saw varied response as well. So if you look at Calgary, for example, it's call a plumber. That's it. That's your option. We're not responsible for it. We're not doing anything about it. Some towns in the area decided, yeah, call a plumber and send us the bill. So that was their response. Some didn't. A, a, again, it was just varied. It was all over the map. So we had that kind of interesting piece of this as well. And so we're not really sure how to look at the bylaw as far as compensation goes because if I'm a resident whose line froze, I could rightfully say, hey, two-thirds of the line is on this side of the shut off on my side, but one-third is on your side. So at the very least, we're splitting this two-thirds, one-third. That, that's a reasonable response. And then you could start to argue and say, well, it would make sense that it froze next to your house because that's potentially the highest point of the line and it's deepest at the main, potentially. It's all different case by case. I don't know. And say, well, maybe it froze on your end and you froze our line. And now we just sit there and point at each other, right? So it just has this conflict point, has this touching point where we just point at each other that each is to blame. So that delineation of responsibility is a problem when it comes to frozen water lines.
So let's talk about this a little bit. At this point, we know for sure that there are two, two of those 10 people that chose to spend money.
Yeah. So I know of two that after they were hooked up overland, still just wanted to get a plumber and get it fixed and they incurred that cost.
One incurred it, although we said you can stay on your overland line and said, no, we're going to do it ourselves and they're happy with their solution.
Yep.
The other case is maybe a little bit different. So what intrigued me with that other case is exactly what you're just talking about, that we cannot be sure where the line froze.
Right.
But we know it was frozen under the, the sidewalk as much as it was up to the home. That much we know.
Yep.
So this is a case where council need to decide, what do we do with this type of issue? Because the bylaw at this point says that it, if it is from the key to the main, that becomes town responsibility. But as Jeff pointed out, it might be that the first portion of the line froze and only created a downward effect because the main didn't freeze. We know that.
So this is personal to me because one of them was my neighbor who.
Oh, okay.
Um, she, water froze up, so the town was great. They came and helped us attach a hose from my house to her house, but it was during that cold this week.
Yeah, yeah.
And so every night we were having to haul the hose in, making, anyway, it was joyful.
Yeah.
The second week, we were, it did get warmer and so we were able to, um, keep it out 24/7. But the trick was, these people were told, and I was there, that we can't tell you when this will unthaw.
Exactly right.
It could be six months.
Yep.
We don't know this.
Mm-hmm.
And so, not that it's not joyful being hooked up to somebody else's house for six months and having that hose strung across your driveway.
Yeah.
It's not everything you hope and dream it is. So, and then, so they did it, we did it for three weeks, something like that. And then the concern was.
Compensation.
Well, not yet. Then they, then they did call. Then Schaefer's got this new, um, machine, which was fantastic.
Flashed a line.
It spent them three hours to unthaw the line. And according to the machine, they are able, this is my understanding, they are able to tell how many feet out it's frozen. And so they were told that it was, I can't remember now, X amount of feet, which it was under the road, which is where the froze line was.
Right.
So in all of this discussion, I, I definitely can see both sides of it. I think it's interesting that we've spent this money, 5,000 or whatever it was, on this, um, on this, yeah, on this issue. But is it the town's job to take jobs away from our plumbers is my question?
And that's a very good question. It's a very important question we need to resolve.
On that, because I feel like that is not our job. It is not our job to take your job away from you. And by the town being, now, if the town needs it to function and do town things, fantastic. But I felt like the town was proactive. They showed up and I didn't call, by the way.
Yeah.
They had nothing to do with me. But when the neighbor called, they were quite happy with how the town handled them and, you know, said, we can't help you because we couldn't at that time, but, you know, you're more than welcome to call a plumber. I feel like if the business owner, Schaefer's or whoever it is, has put out the money, we know it's for 5,000-ish dollars. And the bill, I mean, my friend's bill was over 800. So it's, it, it, it is, you know, you're spending a little bit of money. I don't feel like that is our.
Okay.
It's not our job.
So that is exactly the conversation we need to, we need to have. The reason what we, why we got that equipment is because nobody in the area had it. And we were trying to help people. We were trying to offer a service. It was not even the, the fee to the, to the, the people who had the problem. It was try to get them out of the misery. That was the intent. Now, at this point, you're right. How do we in the future reconcile the fact that there is jobs local that now can be, um, had with those machines and that our machine could compete with that? And I think, Jeff, you met with Schaefer at this point.
So we went to lunch and just talked about a whole gamut of things. And, and I asked him, I said, how do we, I said, going forward, we've got to figure out how we're going to delineate this responsibility because of exactly what you said. I said, look, I don't think you'd appreciate if we just said, hey, residents, we're just going to take care of it. We'll make a list. We'll get to you one by one and we're just going to come do it because we need to offer you water. And I said, but at the same time, um, we argue a lot and I, and we had a very productive conversation. I said, what I don't want is to put us in a position where you guys respond to everything and then, and then we're always arguing about whether it's the town's fault or not. So I don't want you to respond to everything and to just think all the bills are coming to the town because if that's the case, then we'll just go do it.
Exactly.
If we're paying for all of them, then that costs us a tremendous amount more than if we just go do it. And so we didn't come to a firm conclusion on this. I mean, we agreed that, we both agreed that we would need to work on delineating that responsibility. So for example, we have this again in 10 years. Hopefully it's not till then. Citizen calls, we said, hey, call a plumber. We know these guys have a machine. They get to the site and think they're out past the key or the shut off. They then phone us and say, hey, guys, come on over. We think we're in your territory now. Our guys go over and say, hey, you know what? If it's only going to take you another hour to do it, just do it and send us that portion or you guys bail out, we'll come in from here. We would have some discretion, right? To say, look, uh, in this case, it's another 200 yards to the main, so you guys can go and we'll take it from here. Or yeah, what are you, six feet away? By all means, go and then we'll pay the difference. You know, that's something we talked about, that if we can delineate that a little bit, that may work fine, that they're the first responder per se.
There is also.
Get us on site when they hit a certain point.
Can I just say something? There is also another issue. Can I just say something? There is also another issue. Even with those machines, it takes time to defrost one line.
Oh, yeah.
So now, if we have another machine that can be used to help, maybe there need to be an agreement with the plumbers regarding the loads that they have, because they might not be able physically to attend to a, a large number of people.
I'll give you an example, and you know this one, Mayor. We had a resident in town that, this wasn't a local plumber, it was an out-of-town plumber, spent two trucks, two days at her home, didn't get through, billed her thirty-nine hundred dollars.
Ooh.
Oh, my gosh.
Did not get her water, by the way. And the bill's thirty-nine hundred bucks. So she's coming to me saying, hey, what's the story here? I mean, we really need to examine the responsibility here. And, and the interesting part of that story is she actually, Schaefer's were the ones that actually got it fixed for her ultimately. But Ryland said, when we got there, we went out forty feet before we hit ice. So he says, we think that's a town thing. And I said, well, I get that, because the two trucks that were there for two days before took them that long to get that far. So, yeah, they cleared the way. There's no debate. And it only, you know, what he found is they were only about that far away from the end. When he came, it took him forty-five minutes and it was done. But this lady now has a thirty-nine hundred dollar bill for water that didn't get had. It didn't do anything. It's terrible.
So now what do we do?
Terrible.
And that's another question for council. What do we do?
Okay, Richard Banger builds the house in nineteen sixty-eight, nineteen seventy. They run my water line four feet from surface.
Mm-hmm.
And the new water lines are what, minimum six feet?
I, I don't know the code, but I can tell you the older homes are the ones that had the trouble.
Exactly. So we're responsible, as far as I'm concerned, because the, the line, the original line, was not buried deep enough below the frost level. And we've been paying for those water lines for how many years? If I built a home in nineteen sixty-eight, and all of a sudden I get a real frosty situation, and this is what happened in Calgary, is all the older lines were frozen, I'd like to know what the city of Calgary has done for compensation.
According to their website, it says, what do I do if I suspect my lines are frozen?
Call a plumber, it says.
And that's it? There's nothing else there?
That's exactly what it says.
The second part of my, my question is this. If Council Brown is supplying water to her neighbor
Yep.
For three months, what's going to happen with her water bill?
So let's, let's pick some low-hanging fruit here. We'll, we'll come back to this other one. But I think this other one should be quite simple. The bylaw says that the town will not adjust utility bills in the event of loss of water. But we ask residents to run water continually for a month. So my first thought is, a simple amendment might be wherein the town requests homeowners to run water, the town will issue a
Rebate.
Rebate on a, on a subsequent bill. That, to me, seems like a pretty straightforward piece. Is there any argument there?
No.
No.
So then the other piece to yours, Council Banger, what we, oh, sorry, Mayor.
Okay. In the case of Council Brown or other people in town, there is a definite surcharge
Yep.
On the particular month or two months water bill.
Yep.
And that, to me, should be addressed also.
Yeah, so our, our thought, what we want to do in practice is, so for Council Brown, she comes in and says, hey, my bill in March was, I, my consumption was thirty percent higher than it was in February. We simply credit back anything above her previous month's consumption.
Fair enough.
That, that's one way we've looked at it. Because I can't gauge exactly
No.
To say that we're going to credit everyone fifty meters.
No, but that's what I mean.
Richard and Janet Spanger only used ten anyway.
And, and it depend the number of people in the house, right? We would not know.
Well, and I did just get my bill, and I was interested to see how much it was gone up. And it was twenty bucks.
Right.
It was twenty bucks.
You're happy to help your neighbor for twenty bucks.
Oh, and, and she was, she was like, please make sure to tell me and I will pay you, right? But I was like, okay, and I worked it all out. It was twenty bucks.
Yeah.
So I, it's not like we're talking a hundred bucks even.
No.
Like, that was three weeks, and it was twenty bucks.
And that's the sentiment we've heard from most people. They call and say, what should I do with my neighbor? I don't want them hung out. I'll pay every penny
Yeah.
If they will, if you can tell me how much. And we've been telling them, look, we'll help with them, too, because you're still going to get a water bill. There won't be consumption on it.
Yeah.
Because you couldn't get any water.
Yeah.
Right.
The meter's not going.
But you're still going to get a water bill, and we're okay to help with your neighbor. Like, we're okay to credit them anything in excess of their previous month's consumption. So we're going to put something together on that a little bit, because just today, we sent out the note saying, we don't think you need to run your water anymore. So it was exactly one month.
Okay.
And so, that's something as far as the low-hanging fruit that
Yeah.
Can we amend it to say we will adjust water bills if the town requests
I agree.
Right.
I agree.
The use of water.
Easy way to do it.
Okay.
So the other one, let's go back to the cost of those people who incurred serious plumber bills.
Thirty-nine hundred bucks?
Yep.
And there is different way to look at it, right? One, the town provided those people the opportunity to have an overland line the second week. But the first week, it is true that the advice to the taxpayer was, or to the landowner, was call a plumber. So those who did that followed the instruction of the town. Only the second week could we do something better, different, that would not have that amount of money dispersed by those people. One, we know chose to and doesn't argue about it, doesn't feel bad about it, because that's what I wanted to do, and I did it knowing that there was going to be a significant cost. But the other person follows the instruction of the town
Hundred dollars.
And, and has a bill that makes no sense. Uh, two bill, by the way. The first one makes no sense, and the second one represented forty-five minute work.
The other, the other thing here that's so difficult in these bylaws is, what if it stayed that cold the second week?
Mm-hmm.
You couldn't have gone overland the second week either.
No, you couldn't have.
Like, we just happened to get a break in the weather? And you can't control that in a bylaw.
And even unthawing, even unthawing the line this, uh, the second week, if it has been, again, much twenty below, for sure, that line will have froze over
For sure.
And would have required another unthawing, another unthawing. So how far do we go? And how much do we compensate the people?
Thank you, Mayor, for that. The problem I'm having is that if I'm going to have this problem, and I know it's on me to call a plumber, why am I going to call one out of Lethbridge, where I'm going to incur mileage from Lethbridge to Kerston? I don't think I need to pay for that.
Well, because the local one did not have the equipment. That's the problem.
The one that did come didn't help the problem.
Uh, they did, they did forfeit, forfeit of the line, not realizing they were at one foot away from fixing the problem.
Yeah, it's...
Interestingly enough, that one, one situation that I got a phone call on is the plumber with the son-in-law, and he did wrap the overland pipe with heat tape.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
And was able to
We know the story.
You know?
But the line froze, the line froze over and they had to do the work again.
Well, she was okay, this one. This is a different one.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so
Okay.
Her family came, hooked the heat tape to it, fixed the whole thing up.
Great.
Real great. Um, yeah, it's, this is, the other thing to consider, too, is
Well, we need to decide what to do.
Twelve homes.
Yes.
How many?
We're talking about, about twelve homes. What if we have an event that's a hundred and twenty, or twelve hundred?
Out of the, out of the twelve homes, how many incurred debt?
I don't know for sure.
The plumber.
All I know is, I, I know of the one because she brought bills in. And I know of another because when I was talking to Ryland, he told me they went and fixed theirs.
So we just know of two out of the twelve.
I, I just don't know, yeah.
And we don't know how many of the twelve have water as of right now.
Well, they all have overland, at least.
But we don't know how many.
Yeah, I don't. No. No.
Can I ask, is, is Public Works going to revisit each home now that the warning is out regarding the twinkle?
They may still be frozen, just because the frost might be out. But, yeah, we'll
Is that something we should follow up to see if they could turn it up and have water? I mean, we kind of should know that.
Yep. Yep.
Council Banger?
You know, the very effective thing that we have is that rotary phone call, because I got one today, that
Yeah.
The water line freezing was over.
Yep.
Could we not instigate that very, at the very first of a, of a deep freeze, saying, you know, we suggest
That's what happened. The same thing happened.
Well, not really.
We need to do that, but...
We didn't, we didn't do that as a town that we, we, until we started having multiple
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
This has never been an issue.
I know.
Uh, in fact, I was talking to, I'll just share a story, and they'll use their names. Ryland was telling me that Gibb has, years ago, had owned a, a device that could thaw service lines. He used it once since nineteen eighty-three. Right? This isn't something common. All the municipalities are having this discussion right now.
Yeah.
Right? It's very unusual.
Counselor, so, Council Brown?
In the interest of time.
Yeah. I did not expect we'd be pushing seven o'clock. I didn't order you food, by the way.
Administration suggested that there's no pressing need for any resolutions at this time. I like to follow their recommendation, and we can grind on this for, grind on this for another couple of weeks and come up with some resolution in two weeks.
Yeah, no problem. We can defer till the next meeting to continue.
Okay. Thanks. But essentially, what we, we need to know in two weeks' time is really if there are any others that incurred expenses.
And we'll start getting some bills in, too, from neighbors. And Curtis was going to give us an idea of how much water was probably consumed in that month if you let a faucet run. So we'll have some more numbers as well.
Okay, we have been asked to take a break here.
Five minutes. Move to recess for five minutes.
Okay. So Jeff, do you want to talk anymore about that?
If I want to? No.
No, it's fine. Thank you. All right. So let's take, let's take a five-minute break. Are you in favor? Thank you very much.